Okay, let's remind everybody before we go into council to turn off their phones or put them on silent mode. Also, to call the meeting to order at four P M. Today, we have our mayor is out ill and I'll be sitting in for him. Our C A O is in Toronto, so he's online. Certainly, the mayor is well versed at running these meetings and it looks really easy, so it'll be a little stumbling today. I apologize in advance. But welcome everyone to the Monday, November twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting of council. We're calling the meeting to order at four o'clock. I'd like to ask members for any additions or deletions to the agenda. Hearing none, I have a motion moved by, oh, sorry, that council hereby accepts it. The agenda for Monday, November twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting of council is circulated amended moved by councillor Sukie. Seconded by councillor Wheeler, there's not a lot of options for me. That's okay. And are there any questions regarding this agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? That is carried. Secondly, are there any disclosures of interest for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, then. I have a motion that council hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty three, and the closed meeting of council held on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty three, as circulated or amended moved by councillor. Seconded by councillor Sukie. Are there any questions about those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried. We have no delegations today, no reports from any of the regular members of council, but we do have reports, our weekly reports from our student councillors. So I don't know who wants to go first, councillor. Councillor Corchane.
So on Thursday, November sixteenth, our senior boys volleyball team hosted Anwasa, to which Red Lake beat them two games to none and moved on, but they still made second place, which is still pretty good for the region. And on Wednesday, November twenty second, the high school hosted a transition volleyball tournament for all the elementary schools in the local area. And it was, I'd say it was a success and, you know, it's nice to see all the other future Falcons coming around, getting familiar with the high school.
I think councillor Corchane is underselling the, so the boys volleyball team has never gone to Anwasa in the history of our school. So this was the game that would have brought them to Anwasa. I know it was personally painful. Councillor Corchane's our middle, but you played best of five sets and in both of those games, the Falcons went to five sets. And it literally could not have been any closer. It was two points in the first game and probably six or seven in the second. So. I know it's painful, but it was as someone who just watched, it was some of the best volleyball they've seen and certainly the Falcons did a really good job and should be proud. Sorry, if you need a moment, take one more second. Councillor Red.
I would say the vaping issue that our schools have been facing for a few years now has definitely been getting better. I personally have been hearing less of the alarms going off and hearing less about it in the school. And that is partially due to the fact that teachers have been taking initiative and checking up on the bathrooms and checking in places where students have been kind of doing it and planning a good stop.
And that is, and is that, so as a student, you feel like that's one of the the top issues for for you? Because I mean, what is it about the vaping that's kind of driving you nuts?
Well, I would say that students who are not directly doing it are being affected by it because there has been instances where people who have been vaping have set off the alarm and gotten people who are in the bathroom trying to use the bathroom in trouble, which has caused them to miss tests or assignments or just important information from the class because they were called down the office to talk.
Yeah, and it's so funny, right? Because those, I think they were probably a good idea to stop, you're on public health, but to stop people from smoking cigarettes. And I don't think your generation smokes cigarettes too much, but now you can vape wherever you want, I guess. So I appreciate you bringing that to council. That certainly, and certainly, I think if there's any support you need from the town and the high school needs it, we'd be willing to help. Because I think that's an issue probably for all employers, right? Anything else from the high school? Excellent. Thank you, guys. C A O reports, I don't see any on the agenda. But I do see administration reports. So Mr. Paris will read the report on traffic and parking bylaws. Copy to all members.
Thank you. So in front of you have the bylaw two thousand and sixty-three, traffic and parking amendment. The regular council meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the traffic and parking bylaw number one eight eight five was approved by council. In discussion, we want to schedule, and you look at Schedule G, the bylaw under one eighty-five, outlines the erection of yield signs at intersections and Schedule F outlines stop signs at intersections. Council had requested a review of the Witten Street at Stevens Avenue, which is currently a yield right of way. After reviewing the traffic location and with anticipated increase of traffic flow from the new multi-residential development and the proximity to the Stevens Avenue lookout, administration recommends changing the yield sign to a stop sign for traffic and pedestrian safety and all the changes are noted in the in the reported in the Schedule G and F. There's no financial implications and, you know, the mayor and councillor has two options. Option A is to adopt bylaw two zero six three, having a bylaw to amend by law number one eight eight five, updated Schedule G and F, which is a schedule that outlines the erection of yield signs and stop signs. Or option B, do not adopt the bylaw number two zero six three. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that bylaw number two zero six three be adopted, amending Schedule G and F as described in the report.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Paris. I have a motion to, I gotta put the motion on the floor, questions for motion on the floor first, that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on traffic and parking bylaw amendment and further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in the meeting on where is in the town to enter in police agreement. Moved by. Mister Wheeler. Seconded by. Any questions of Mr. Paris?
Refresh my memory, is it? So we're stopping one side and the yield from the other?
Yeah, so when you're looking coming down, we'll say if you're at the marina.
Yeah.
At the water watch and you're coming back that way, you'll be stopping at that location.
Yeah.
So right now, that's a current yield sign and it'll be a full stop.
Coming from the other direction?
It's the other direction is a stop currently. We reviewed all the, we reviewed McCalla, McCloud, Woodson and all, and that was the only one that we've had some concerns that we want to make some changes to.
And I think there will be more traffic down there, so it makes some sense.
There will be, and you know, and even looking at the lookout, it's a pretty busy location, so I think overall it's a good recommendation.
Yeah, there are questions. Our student councillors are old enough to drive. Let everybody know there's a stop sign there now.
Not yet, it's not, once you guys approve it.
So I guess without any questions, all in favor? We're carried. Mr. Tratchell now provide a verbal update on the activity of the Marathon Fire Department. Did I get it right? I didn't get it right. Yeah.
Councillors and student councillors, first, I would like to thank or thank everybody for the opportunity to be the fire chief in the town of Marathon and to be Santa in the parade on Saturday. It's a great community I found to live in and the people are very friendly. So far to date, Marathon Fire Department has responded to seventy-four calls for service in Marathon or the hundred kilometers of highway that we cover. Of those seventy-four, twenty-three have been motor vehicle clearings. We've got eight fires and the rest of the calls have been made up, anything from fire alarms in buildings, trees on hydro lines and CO alarms, to name a few. We train three nights a week. Oh, a month, sorry. And the first Tuesday of the month is the night that we take to go over all of our equipment to make sure everything is working properly. We've actively, we've been trying to recruit firefighters as our numbers are a bit low and since August, we've gotten six firefighters to join. This brings our number to eighteen firefighters and four dispatchers. And myself. And we will continue to accept applications. We've, we tried to get out in the community more since I started in August and most things we have put on or participated in seem to be a big hit. Halloween barbecue being the biggest, I think. Our next project is what's called the twelve days of holiday fire and C O safety. It's put on by the Fire Marshals Public Safety Council. Marathon Fire Department and C F N O. The Fire Marshals Public Safety Council supplies twelve tips for twelve days in December, which will be read on the radio and then there's prizes awarded each day. We still haven't worked out how the prizes are going to be given out. That's more in the lines of C F N O doing that. We will continue to get out in the community and get the fire safety messages out to the people of Marathon. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer some.
Questions from the floor? But I think since you took it over, I've seen some like more community presses and it's been felt, it's been noticed and people I have talked with. So kudos to you on doing that. What would be like the ideal number of firefighters? I'm sure there's no such thing as too many, but you said eighteen.
I think the town is allotted for forty firefighters, I think, is what the number is, but it's hardly like we're stuck around eighteen, so. If we could get, I would, like even, the hard part is that during the day, at night, there's lots of people, during the day, people that we would need more people.
And so if somebody didn't want to, you know, join the fire department, what would the process be for them just to contact you or to?
Or come, you can contact me or come to the front. I think, I believe Jamie has applications there as well.
Is there any, anything as a council that we can do to help support that or to help grow the?
No, word of mouth is good. Word of mouth seems to work the best. Just talking to people and letting them know that all the fire department is looking for members.
Are we still running a, I can't remember what it's called, it's like a junior fire.
Cadet program, no, it doesn't seem, I don't know what happened with it or anything like that.
And I know in the past, we have had some high school students connected to the program, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, then, thank you for that. Next, we'll have Miss Sukie, Community Service Manager, provide a verbal update on the two thousand and twenty-four winter carnival planning.
Great. The Community Services Department has been working with many businesses, organizations and clubs to plan fun events for the community's winter festival. The winter festival will be held on Family Day weekend and will begin Thursday, February fifteenth and wrap up on Monday, February nineteenth. So far, we've had interest from approximately twelve local groups that have registered to host an event or activity, to name a few activities that community can look forward to, are seeing snow and ice sculpture contests, a bingo, a bonfire, skidoo rides, open houses, fish derby, skiing, snow shooting and hot chocolates, sponsored movie in states and children adult dances. Some frequently asked questions that I'd like to throw some answers out to. How, or sorry, who can register for an activity or event? So short answer, anybody can. Aside from being a volunteer in a business group or club, any community member can plan an event or activity throughout the five days. By reaching out to the cashier officer myself. And there's also assistance that we can provide if they need space or equipment. How will we know what activities are happening and when? So we will create a pamphlet and share it on our social media as well as the newspaper within the complex. What if I have an event idea, but I don't know if it's already planned? So please just contact myself or the cashier office at the complex. Our contact info is on the website and on our Facebook page. We can answer any questions. How do I register and what is the last stage register? So the registration link is on our website and our Facebook page. The cashier office is also willing to do in-person registration if technology is in the best interest. The last day to register for an event or activity would be Monday, January fifteenth. So one month before the openings of the festival. And lastly, if anybody is looking to volunteer during these five days, but don't specifically have a group they can tag along in, just reach out to us and we'll find a place to fit you in.
Excellent. Thank you for the report. Does anybody have any questions for Sukie?
I just, as the councillor Blake, prior to the meeting of council, who participated in previous carnivals or festivals of that sort. If so, they'd be interested in doing something, so perhaps we can talk amongst ourselves and see if there's a an activity or brunch, lunch, or whatever, boot hockey, whatever it may be to kind of coordinate something.
The mayor might go down the old ski hill.
We can do that, dude.
For charity. Like, that's a great idea, I think. We can, we can talk about that as a group. I think that would be good leadership to win for that event. That's a great idea. Have we, I'm maybe gonna ask for the students contacted the high school at all about?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. And. The dates for events go from when again?
So they start on Thursday, the fifteenth and run through at the weekend and everything will wrap up on Family Day, the Monday.
On the Monday, so if you had an idea between Thursday and Monday, then it can be part of that. Okay, that's great. Any other questions or comments?
Is it also like centered around like Penn Lake or just?
So whatever, certain businesses, some of them are within their business, some of them are being held at the arena, some are at the snow ski shoe club and I said that, ski snow shoe club or at the L C H Legion, wherever they're hosting multiple locations.
Okay, so it'll be a whole community wide kind of thing. That's awesome. Any other questions? It sounds great. So it sounds like it really is driven from folks who come up with this idea and then come to you to make sure it fits in the schedule. And then we just, we'll, we'll do the advertising and what if a group needed some support? Is there some support that the town can offer?
Yeah, we have, we've assisted some of the groups already with locations or access to some of our equipment that we have that they need.
Okay, so it's, 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 it sounds like if you're a community group, come see Tessa and we'll try to make it work. I think that's a great way to do it. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Sukie. I have a motion following that for the check runs. A motion that following October twenty twenty-three check run be approved for payment, accounts payable eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and payroll at one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven. Moved by councillor Wheeler, seconded by councillor Sukie. Any questions of that check run? Hearing none, all in favor? Carried. And finally, we have a report from appointed members and boards committee. This is a report from councillor Wheeler doing a verbal update on the Thunder Bay Health District.
Thank you, councillor Blake. I attended the Thunder Bay District Health Unit Board of Health meeting on November fifteenth. As people may have seen, the health unit has been in the news recently and it all surrounds the, actually, the Ministry of Health's strengthening of public health initiative and and how it affects our local health unit. The strengthening of public health unit initiative is actually made up of three pillars. Reviewing the roles and responsibility of public health units, voluntary mergers of health units and reviewing the funding of public health units. So the big focus on our meeting on the, on the fifteenth was surrounding the voluntary mergers. The ministry and the province is pushing to reduce the amount of health units in Ontario and they're putting pressure on the Thunder Bay District to merge with the Northwest Health Unit. So the Thunder Bay District Health Unit covers from basically Manitowoc and Greenstone to the communities surrounding Thunder Bay and the Northwest covers the rest of the province and the Manitoba border. So just to kind of put that into perspective, the Thunder Bay District Health Unit already covers two hundred and thirty thousand square kilometers and about a hundred and forty-six thousand residents and the Northwest would add another hundred and seventy-eight thousand square kilometers at eighty-two thousand people. So the province's goal for their health units is to have, in this new system, is to have five hundred thousand people, which would never work here. You're talking about everybody from Sudbury all the way to the Manitoba border to do that. Our biggest concern with this voluntary merger is obviously the geographic size. So you're looking at, for travel wise, over ten hours plus from one side to the other. And places like us, Marathon, Manitowoc, being at the edge of this new health unit, you worry about getting left behind, not being in one of the hubs, especially now, like, right now, the hub is Thunder Bay. Well, now you're going to be having Thunder Bay, Dryden, Canora. You're, you're just, you're, we're concerned about leaving these local communities behind. Now, there is potential positives with a merger that we're, cannot be ignored because the province is, is saying that you're going to get more funding. But. Is that outweighing the negative? We're not so sure. So at our meeting, we did pass a resolution to enter into just exploratory talks with Northwest. Also, to look at the possibilities, the pros and cons further, just to make sure we're doing our due diligence to make sure that if there is any positives, like extreme positives. But at the moment, our, our board is pretty against the merger. Especially with the tight timelines, they're looking like they don't want to have this resolved by like the first quarter of next year. So, yeah, we're, we're, I was also just at the virtual Alpha Ball Symposium on Friday and they talked about this more and it does make a lot of sense for some other health units, but at this time, the Thunder Bay District is, we're under the stance that it's, we're pushing against it.
Thank you for that. For any questions? Maybe I would have liked, like, my sense is when you talk about that geographic region, I mean, I've always, I think that's the size of France, basically, right? And you'd have one health unit to cover that. And I do always feel like, yes, we don't have the population, but if you have one of something in a health unit and they have to travel.
Yeah, so yeah, you, you take one, like a manager within that health unit, that's a big geographic area for travel wise, just keeping track of how different places do, do different things. Yeah, the biggest thing is that you're looking at like travel, especially in the wintertime, like some of the managers, like, yeah, we can do a lot of things on Zoom, but a lot of things in public health, like vaccine clinics, pandemic responses, different, all these different things that they work on behind the scenes involve a lot of travel.
Certainly, if our support is you move forward with that, and that makes some sense.
And if anybody has any more questions, I want to reach out to me, like, I can, I'm always available.
Thank you for that. Following that is our bylaws, all. I have a motion to approve bylaw number two thousand and sixty-three and that bylaw twenty sixty-three being a bylaw to amend the bylaw number eighteen eighty-five, being a bylaw that regulates traffic and parking on highways and parking lots on municipal and private property within municipal boundaries of the town of Marathon. You read it first, second and third time and finally passes twenty-seventh day of November, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a mover and a secondary? Councillor Sukie, any questions in that? All in favor? It's carried. Under new business, we now have the municipal budget schedule, more of the C A O is going to speak to that.
Yeah, I can certainly highlight that, your worship, no problem. Just more or less for your information for council. As we approach year end, so of course, our year end is a calendar year. Just wanted to provide council as well as the resident public with what we're looking at for a two thousand and twenty-four budget schedule. So December the eighteenth, administration will bring the two thousand and twenty-four fees and charges recommendations to council, which need to be approved by January the first of the following year. December the eleventh to the twenty-second, we'll hold our internal department budget meetings. So we'll have a very good handle on where the budget sits when we head into the Christmas break. Then, once we resume full business after that break, we'll finalize the budget in a draft form. Part of this will be, as we have done in past years, an online survey where residents have the opportunity to provide input into the budget. Those advertisements will go out before we head on Christmas break. January the fifteenth to the nineteenth, the treasurer and myself will consolidate the budget, complete a final review. It'll then go to council by the end of January, Special Bureau of Council for Administration to present that draft. Here, budget delegations that are requested from the public or organizations within the community. And then, of course, we look at preliminary approval of the capital budget. The reason being, we like to have the capital budget approved so we can go out to R F P and tender before the spring season, as we've found in the past. We're more successful in bringing projects on budget when we're able to do that. February, we'll use the month to revise the draft budget in working with council. And then traditionally, by the end of April, we have the final budget approved. As there are some things we need to wait to align with the province and the feds as their year end is the end of March. So that's why the end of April, two thousand and twenty-four date is the final approval of our budget. Happy to answer any questions, but no, no real changes from past years and we expect that it, it is going to be another challenging budget year, but of course, one that administration will be up for.
Thank you. Sir, any questions from that? I guess the one question I might have is, so it sounds like there are two places for sure that the public can have input. One is that online survey that'll be coming up at the end of December and then in a public meeting. Will we do that virtually or will we do that in person?
We, last year, we provided both options, an option to be in person or to utilize the technology that we're using today to present. So that, that'll be made public through a number of advertising mediums. So there'll be ample opportunity to request those delegations with council. And of course, there's also always the opportunity to, to send an email to the municipality as well. So all that'll be advertised well in advance and the public can watch for that in December.
Thank you. And I, and certainly, I think everybody who is buying groceries or getting their home knows it is a, it can be a tough year for budgeting. So I appreciate the work that's going in already. Our second request or under B is a request has been received from the township of, or the town of Orangeville seeking support of the resolution pertaining to the Ontario Works Financial Assistance Rates. Copy of all members, there is a motion that council hereby supports the attached resolution received from the town of Orangeville pertaining to Ontario Works Financial Assistant Rates and further that a copy of this motion be forwarded to individuals listed on the original resolution. Can I have a mover and a secondary to put it on the floor? Councillor Sukie, any questions of that Orangeville resolution?
You just said it yourself. Budget groceries and the rest of it.
Yeah, certainly, and I'm, I feel like I'm getting older and more cynical, but I don't know where the money to keep paying for anything comes from. But there's just not enough money in those, in what people are getting to feed themselves, I don't think. I don't know if, if you're feeling C A O Skorchinsky around supporting this. Any?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I think it makes total sense, you know, you know, the, the way, you know, the, the rates have been frozen since two thousand and eighteen and, you know, I, you know, I'm down at a college Ontario conference right now and one of the things we've talked about is, is tuition rates being frozen and, you know, potentially putting Ontario College in deficit situations because they haven't kept pace with inflation. So it's extremely difficult to play catch up, so it makes sense, you know, that rates, try and keep pace as best as possible with consumer price index increases. That way, you know, they're not large budget amounts in one lump sum. So I think this makes a lot of sense to support.
Okay, I think it does. Do you decide to ask the call question on the paper? Carried. Carried? We'll send that to Orangeville showing our support. And secondly, a request has been received from the township of Shunia and a motion that council hereby supports the attached resolution received from Shunia pertaining to excessive noise resulting from the operation of moving vehicles. And further that a copy of the motion be forwarded to the individuals listed on the original resolution moved by and so Suki, seconded by Counsel Wheeler. Any questions of that resolution around, I think Jake breaks is really what it is. Any questions? Good to that, yeah. Well, I mean, I remember the days of Mill when the big trucks would come through, what do we have, twenty-six or whatever? Maybe more than that trucks a day and the Jake breaks were an issue. Doesn't feel like it's as big an issue for us, but I, I wonder if administration might comment on whether we ought to support this from.
Yeah, we, we actually, the use of Jake breaks is prohibited within our municipality, within our bylaws. So as an extension, you know, I think for other communities, we should support it. It's obviously regulated under the Highway Traffic Act. So I think it's more a question of, you know, is it being enforced properly? So, you know, when you pass the resolution via bylaw, you know, by the municipality, it gives you that opportunity to, to represent it to the government to enforce.
Yeah, and my understanding was that this was saying that bylaws are ineffective. They're hoping that the provincial offenses will take control of, is that, is that my reading?
Yeah, so, so the, you know, the municipality has the ability to regulate, just like you did with traffic and parking, has the ability to regulate this under its municipal bylaws. And by doing so, by extension, the Highway Traffic Act would then be applicable and could be enforced through appointed officers, be it bylaw officers or the Ontario Provincial Police.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So maybe with that clarification, ask the question all in favor. Carried? We are an agreeable bunch today. That's it for questions. And I think that might be it. It might be time for a, a motion to adjourn. I was in Thunder Bay this weekend. So I don't know if either of the other counselors wanted to say something about the, the parade that I know you both attended and maybe offer some congratulations to the folks like that.
Yeah, I spent time with the Marathon Fire Department during the parade. And I'll give them a shout out saying they got sprung on to have to do some traffic control at the last minute. And they did a very good job with that. They came up with a plan. And also all the floats, it was probably one of the best parades that I've seen in Marathon. It was very well attended by the community as well.
I heard the same. I was just, just a spectator. I wasn't involved in any particular float. But that's turned out good.
It's kind of what makes a community too, right? It's, so it's, it was events. So congratulations to everyone that was involved. And I guess a special thank you to the fire department for making sure everybody was safe. And to our community services, I know they work really hard on that. So thank you. With that, I have a motion to adjourn at the hour of four. The mayor always goes longer, but at four thirty-two. Moved by Counsel Wheeler. Seconded by Counsel Suki. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. And thank you to the student counselors for that report.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, guys.